Mine showed that the center computer was on mute. Oh, there you are.
Good evening and thank you for joining us. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I'd like to welcome everybody to another virtual and in-person meeting. For those of you virtual, board members and some town staff should be visible on your video. I'd like to remind board members two things. Please mute your microphone while you are not speaking and please do not use the WebEx chat function. This virtual, this meeting will have a public comment period for both ordinance and regular public comments. If necessary, town staff is available and prepared to confirm or attempt to resolve any technical issues. If you are having a technical problem and are unable to participate meaningfully, please email on our town website, Drew Anderson. We appreciate your participation and as in with our regular in-person meetings, we hope to create a friendly and respectful atmosphere for public dialogue. I call to order this regular Board of Trustees meeting, February 16th, 2021. I'd like to welcome Boy Scout Troop Six and I'd like to ask Assistant Senior Patrol Leader Weatherby to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please come up here. Thank you. Ms. Hogan, will you take role, please?
Mayor Wilson?
Here.
Mayor Protem Elliott?
Here.
Trustee Clark?
Here.
Trustee Lakind?
Here.
Trustee Romanello?
Here.
Trustee Stevens?
Here.
Trustee Anru?
Here.
Okay, before us, we have a consent agenda. Is there any modifications to the consent agenda?
I'd like to make a modification, Mayor, to move item C, kratom presentation, after item A, before the water project update.
Okay. Is there any other modifications? Is there a motion to approve the agenda as modified?
I'd like to make a motion.
To approve the agenda as modified.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Hogan.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Anru?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Trustee Lakind?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Elliott?
Yes.
Trustee Stevens?
Yes.
Trustee Romanello?
Yes.
Okay, first item on the agenda, oath of office, Sergeant Promotion, Tim Johnson and Andrew Romano. Chief Hemingway.
Mayor and Board, thank you for this opportunity. Boy Scouts, if you just give Commander Hudson your name, so we'll have a nice recruitment pool. About, I don't know, five years from now, seven years, I don't know. How old are you guys? All right, so we'll wait, we'll wait about 10 years, get you through college or whatever else, but make sure we get your names before you leave. So tonight, it's my distinct honor to present some promotions. We come together extremely proud of the Monument Police Staff. In this process, five experienced and well-qualified members apply to be interviewed for the rank of Sergeant. Two were selected based on the outcomes of their interview and their ability to lead. As Chief of Police, I take this responsibility very seriously because nothing is more important than promoting two members to the rank of Sergeant. These folks, Officer Romano and Officer Johnson, would you like to say hello? These two members have been with the department or in law enforcement for some time. And when we promote these people to the rank of Sergeant, they're essentially the Chief of Police when we're home sleeping at night. They're the ones that are ensuring professional services applied when nobody's watching. As I promote, I rarely look at what's best for these guys, but we'll look at what's best for the community and the officers that they're responsible to serve. Tonight is a very special night as I'm promoting the first two sergeants since I've been here as the chief. Based on a process that I've created with my command staff that we believe has vetted the best possible candidates. Placing a great emphasis on policing this community first and based on this community's expectations of this police department. As we've seen over the past year, there's no more important time to be an effective and trusted police leader than now. These two future sergeants get it. They understand their residents have certain expectations of their police force in this community and their expectations aren't from a set of plans or policies drafted in Washington or in Denver, but these policies and our expectation is that you'll police this community based on the expectations of this community. And they get that. Excuse me. At Monument, we have a very supportive law enforcement community. They trust our officers, but they want one thing. They want the best police department and they want to be safe. And these individuals will put service before themselves. Before I minister their oaths of office, oaths of office, I would be remiss if I failed to acknowledge a few key points. If we look back just one year, we commonly would see a scenario that would sometimes allow for just one Monument Police Officer to patrol this community of almost 10,000 people at certain times. Many times with no backup, many times with no supervision. And more importantly, many times without the ability to handle more than one emergency at one time. And we've come a long way. Sometimes these solo officers, just a year ago, would have less than one year experience under their belt. Mayor Wilson, this Board of Trustees and Town Manager, Mike Foreman, after meeting many times with myself and Commander Hudson and them asking many different and difficult questions about how we could expand services on a very primitive budget, we came up with a lot of ideas, but before we could go to the Board or the Mayor with any of our suggestions, they made it clear that we look at every level of efficiency and we've done that. We'll never throw money at a problem and tonight, this Board has allowed me to essentially make history and put a supervisor on every squad, something we've never seen in the history of the Monument Police Department, and I thank the Board for that. And so does Commander Hudson. Tonight, we also make history by promoting our first African-American Sergeant, Officer Tim Johnson. And I could be more proud to do it than in February, which is Black History Month. And let me just be clear, this is something that Tim is, he's a very humble guy. And that's not, that's not important to Tim. What's important to Tim and to Andrew is I highlight that before Black History Month or before anything else, these are two decorated and highly respected veterans from the US military. Tim served in the Navy and Romano served in the US Air Force where he currently serves as a Reserve. Yes, as a Reserve. So we're very proud of that. But not only are these men highly respected veterans, they're also well-respected in this community already. This community loves these officers. Their colleagues, they couldn't be more proud of me from promoting them. Again, I don't promote based on them. I promote based on what's best for their colleagues and what's best for this community. People who put service before self. And by no uncertain terms, these two gentlemen will do that. What's important to me is that we're promoting, promoting from within our internal ranks. And I've said this since I got here. I'll never offer an opportunity to an outside police officer that I can't first say I've exhausted every opportunity to offer that opportunity to one of our internal candidates. Some may complain that change may not come quick enough in our department, but I'll wait because I'll put this police department against any police department in the country. And I've worked, I've worked in New York and I've worked in Miami, you probably can't tell from my accent. But I'm very proud that we're promoting our people and how much we value our internal resources, our human resources, that is. Cops will complain about two things. They'll complain about the way things currently are and also complain about any possibility of new change. And again, it may come slower, but we'll get through that. These two folks are extremely proud to serve this community. With Commander Hudson, I'm going to now ask Sergeants Romano and Johnson, please come forward on each side of the podium. You pick your side. And if you'd like to bring your families up to stand on the opposite side of the podium from us. With Sergeant Romano or his father Dominic, his mother Catherine and his wife Denise, who ultimately pinned Sergeant Romano's badge. Company Sergeant Johnson is his son Dominic, who's also a Colorado Springs Police Officer, and he will have the honor of pinning Sergeant Johnson's badge. We're sorry Sergeant Owens that we've stripped that honor from you. Quick bio of the two. Originally Sergeant Romano was raised in Los Angeles, California. However, he's been in Colorado for 20 years. He graduated Pine Creek High School in 2007. He joined the US Air Force Reserves in 2009 and after three years, he went on with the 302nd Security Forces Squadron at Peterson Air Force Base. And like I said earlier, he's currently a Reserve. In 2011, he graduated the Pike's Peak Law Enforcement Community College Law Enforcement Academy and he was hired with us back in 2012. In 2017, Sergeant Romano became a Community Resource Officer. The CRO, as CRO, he earned the YMCA Officer of the Year for Community Partnership. He's also earned the Employee of the Month at Chief Accommodation for Community Programs and his Service Award for evacuating and rescuing many people during the Black Forest Fires. In 2018, he was selected to be a Field Training Officer, which he's very proud of. And that's actually his first step as a supervisor here in Monument. And then Sergeant Timothy J. Johnson is from Evansville, Indiana. At 18, he joined the US Navy as an aircraft electrician for 11 years. There, he supervised, coached and mentored numerous personnel. He has four and a half deployments to the Western Pacific. How's the half? Did you decide to come back like on trip five or? Okay, I didn't understand the 4.5, but for tours, we certainly, on behalf of everybody in this room, thank you for that service to our nation. After 20 years, he retired from service with the Navy. There, he received four Navy Commendation Medals, five Navy Achievement Medals and various other personal unit awards and accolades. After retiring the Navy, he attended the El Paso County Sheriff's Academy. After working in the jail for one year, he went over to Fountain PD. While in Fountain, he attained the rank of Sergeant and successfully trained numerous personnel in that department. He held the position of Patrol Sergeant, Tactical Team Leader on the SWAT team and he was detached to the ATF, the US ATF as a Task Force Officer. Here, he teaches defensive tactics and emergency vehicle operations. I'm sorry, there he did that, the defensive tactics in the vehicle. He retired after 12 and a half years, two medals of valor, two Chiefs Commendation Medals and various other personal medals and awards. He was hired here in Monument in 2019. At this time, it's with great confidence that I present Sergeants Romano and Johnson to this town's administration, Mayor Wilson and the Board of Trustees, to our police department family and to the great residents of the town of Monument as these two fine men enter their leadership role as the rank of Sergeant. This time, I'll ask Sergeant, Commander Hudson to come forward with the oaths of office. Sergeant Romano and Sergeant Johnson, if you please raise your right hand. I state your names. To solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution, the laws of the United States of America and the state of Colorado and to the ordinances of the town of Monument and that I will defend and protect the lives, safety and property of the people of Monument and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge duties of the Office of Sergeant to the best of my ability. So help me God. Sergeant Romano, would you like to say a quick word or two?
Sure. So I just said I've worked for Monument now for nine years. I'm very honored to take this responsibility and I'm looking forward to the opportunity of this next chapter of my life and promise the guys I'm going to work hard and work for you guys and we'll work hard for the town and very proud and excited.
First, let me say thanks to Chief and Commander Hudson for all the support. Thank you, guys. I know there was a lot of feedback, so I will do the best I can for all of you and for you guys in the town as well. Thank you. Mayor and Board, again, thank you for the time to present.
Thank you and congratulations, gentlemen. Okay, next item on the agenda, introduction of the new Fire Chief, Mr. Tharnish.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and Mayor. Tonight, I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce you to the new Fire Chief for the Tri-Lakes Fire Protection District, Monument Fire Protection District, Chief Andy Kovacs. And just give you a quick background on him and then I'll let him say a few words and take any questions you may have. Chief Kovacs came to us from the Brighton Fire Rescue District in Colorado. Prior to that, he was with the Orange County Fire Authority in California for 29 years where he's rolled it through the ranks from firefighter, paramedic up to Division Chief. Chief Kovacs has a Master's of Public Administration degree from Columbia Southern University, a Bachelor of Arts degree in organizational leadership from Chapman University. And from that data and through a strict screening process that our district went through to hire him, he was the best candidate we had and we look forward to many years of success. I'll let him say a few words.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Trustees, Town Manager. It's an honor to be here. And as Tom mentioned, this is my 31st year in the fire service. I did start in public safety at the age of 16, working as a beach lifeguard in Southern California and quickly was inspired to become an EMT and a paramedic. And that's ultimately what got my foot in the door with the fire department. And so, as Tom mentioned, about 29 years with the Orange County Fire Authority. Started as a firefighter, worked many years as a paramedic and as a fire captain. Ultimately promoting to the position of Division Chief, which in Orange County was a little bit unique compared to that position here in Colorado. Essentially, I had four cities that I was responsible for and so I would attend city council meetings, city staff meetings, and then would report back to our Fire Chief. Orange County contracts with 23 cities, so as you can imagine, the Fire Chief can't be everywhere at all times. And so he relied heavily on his Division Chiefs to act on his behalf for the interest of the Fire Authority. I was actually doing a little bit of commuting back and forth from Southern California to Colorado, having lived out here now for about 13 years. And so I decided that hopping on an airplane on a regular basis was getting a little bit old and so I sought employment with Brighton and I became their Training Chief. And about four months into the job, the Fire Chief retired, the deputy got promoted and I got promoted to the position of Deputy Chief. And then when I saw this opportunity to come down and work and live in the Monument area, I jumped in with both feet. So it's been about seven weeks now, still trying to get settled into the new role. But Chief Trudy did an amazing job of kind of setting the foundation financially for the success of the fire district. And so we're moving forward with a lot of exciting initiatives to take the fire district to the next level. One of the things that I communicated through my interview process for the position was the importance of character, connection and a commitment to excellence. And what I mean by that is I will lead with integrity, honesty, a strong work ethic and I expect everybody in the fire district to do the same. Also, I really value connection and having relationships. That was something that I did quite a bit of in Orange County with the various public safety agencies. And so I look forward to working with Police Chief Hemingway to really move and advance initiatives for public safety for the residents here in the city or excuse me, in the town of Monument. And then the last one is a commitment to excellence and I will give 110% to everything that I do and I really expect nothing less of the folks that work in the fire district. In the short time I've been here, I've been very, very impressed with the caliber of firefighter that serves this community. Are there things to do? Absolutely. But knowing that their work ethic is second to none, I'm very confident we're going to do some great things for the residents in this community and beyond. With that, thank you for your time. I am looking forward to meeting all of you one-on-one to more formally and properly introduce myself, but more importantly, just find ways to establish relationships between the fire district and the town of Monument for the betterment of the community. So thank you very much and it's great to be here.
Thank you, Chief.
Any questions? Thank you.
Moving on, next item on the agenda, we have Mr. Haddow with the American Kratom Association.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson, and I appreciate the Board of Trustees allowing me this opportunity to come and speak to you this evening. I want to tell you why I'm here. It's only partially because of the ban that you currently have on the sale of kratom products in Monument. The American Kratom Association represents about 15 million consumers in the United States of kratom. And I had a phone call from a Monument citizen, a lady who informed me that she was, her son is a user of kratom and she told me his story. And I don't think she wanted her name disclosed and is not here tonight because I don't think she wants a visit from Chief Hemingway given the current situation here in Monument. But she told me that her son, who was in his mid-20s, had his life fall apart because he became addicted to opioids and ended up with an overdose situation, but prior to that had lost his family and his young son. And she said that one of his friends, who was also in this group, recommended that he should try kratom because many people have found that kratom can successfully help people wean off of opioid addictions and becomes a replacement for dangerously addictive and potentially deadly opioids. And she said today, this young man is back with his family, is a good husband, is employed and is a good father to his child. And she said, I want you to be my voice to tell that story to the Board of Trustees. She explained to me that Monument is a great place to live. She said that the values that this town has are about a defense of freedom, about independence and about self-reliance. And those kinds of values resonated with me. My wife and I raised six children and we tried to instill those very values in our children. And I think you would be proud to have five of those six be citizens of your town. There's one that's still a work in progress on that front. But here tonight, I want to be the voice for this citizen because kratom is in fact a very important part, we think, of the solution to some of the problems that you face in your community in this area. But first, let me tell you briefly what kratom is. The source is, it comes from a tree of the coffee plant in Southeast Asia. The plant genetics derive from the coffee plant and it has been used safely for centuries by laborers and low-income families in Southeast Asia. Laborers would pick the leaves during their hard work in the fields and chew on them and they felt energy boost and the analgesic effects that got them through their long days. The kratom consumers in the United States, who are they? There are 11 to 16 million kratom consumers who use kratom today. The profile, based on a peer-reviewed published study by Dr. Grooman, published in a respected journal, indicates that most of these are married or partnered, 30 to 50 years old, employed with health insurance, have an income between $35,000 and $75,000 a year, that 40% of them actually consult with their physicians about the use of kratom. They are educated with some college and graduate degrees and some use it as an alternative pain management option to prescription drugs, either NSAIDs or opioids that obviously fall into the trap. Now, let me tell you for just a second, the important thing about kratom, and you almost have to wipe clean your memory banks because anything you might have Googled about kratom or heard about kratom, even from respected journals like WebMD or the Mayo Clinic, would lead you to believe that kratom is somehow a very dangerous product. But in fact, that is a myth that I would like to address just a little bit today. One is that the FDA paints kratom as being responsible for numerous deaths across the country. They had submitted to the Drug Enforcement Administration on two occasions, recommendations for scheduling and one of the burdens in making that recommendation is that you have to have a safety profile and the FDA looks at these kratom deaths. In every single death that was reported by the FDA, those deaths were actually caused, when evaluated independently, by poly-drug use or by an adulterated kratom product. Some may have been underlying medical conditions where they might have died, no matter what the circumstances. But the National Institutes on Drug Abuse evaluated all of the data from the FDA and they agreed with the American Kratom Association's independent expert that that's really the cause of these deaths. It's not kratom itself because kratom in its pure form, as long as it's not adulterated, doesn't have the euphoric high that is reinforcing for people to become addicted to that substance. It doesn't hit your respiratory system, so it doesn't have the effects that an opioid might have if you overdose on it. So you can take as much kratom as you like and it has a ceiling effect. But Dr. McCurdy, who is the preeminent scientist on kratom studies funded by the National Institutes on Drug Abuse, said it's like a gasoline engine governor. You can, you press that gas pedal as hard as you want, but you're going to have a ceiling effect. You can't go any faster. And that's been true with the pharmacologic profile of kratom. But on this slide, I give you an example of deaths in Colorado attributed to kratom. These are widely reported. You will hear it from your health experts and this obviously is a matter of concern. But when these deaths were evaluated by independent medical experts here in Colorado, reported in the New England Journal of Medicine, they found that of the 14 deaths or 15 kratom-related deaths that were listed by medical examiners and coroners between 1999 and 2017, all 15 kratom-related deaths, they determined that 14 deaths clearly involved multiple drugs. In the last one, there wasn't a sufficient residual drug or blood available to make an analysis. And that was subsequently reported by the Centers for Disease Control and their evaluation where they also concluded that many medical examiners and coroners that many medical examiners and coroners around the country, acting upon the efforts of the FDA, will sometimes mislabel a death claiming that because metrogenine, which is one of the alkaloids found in the Kratom plant, shows in a tox screen, which wouldn't be surprising since many people are using it to try to wean off of opioids, they therefore labeled as a Kratom-associated death, when in fact, it should be the underlying cause, which is the drug itself that they were working on. So this is an example of where if we look at data, and by the way, the CDC said that many of these mislabeled deaths may be because the coroner's office and medical examiner's office are not sufficiently given the equipment, the modern equipment, and the analytical tools that would allow them to make the kinds of assessments that these experts did and the CDC did. Can a person overdose on Kratom? And this is an important safety profile. This is the National Institutes on Drug Abuse website was updated after they did their independent evaluation, and they confirmed what I just told you, that these are all either adulterated Kratom products or poly-drug use. So the NIDA people now have gone to the US Congress. And when asked specifically under oath, the NIDA Director, as to whether or not Kratom should be banned, she said, no, we shouldn't schedule it. In fact, we should encourage it because of the reports that we are receiving across the country of people who are having their lives saved by Kratom because they are able to wean off of deadly opioids and potentially highly addictive opioids. When she was asked again about Schedule I, whether it should be scheduled, she said, no. Then that was an interesting response under oath, because the National Institutes on Drug Abuse is required under the existing Controlled Substances Act to collaborate with the FDA in any scheduling recommendation that is made to the Drug Enforcement Administration. And we know that there was one made on October the 17th of 2017. So obviously, NIDA would have had to concur in that. But Director Volko indicated that when she looked at the data, that she withdrew her recommendation to the FDA and said that it didn't meet it. And the reason she did is that NIDA funded two animal studies, which are the gold standard for addiction liability that is required for the scheduling or the banning of Kratom under the Federal Controlled Substances Act. Both of those studies indicated there was no significant addiction liability. One's called the U study, of the others, the HEMBE study, all funded by NIDA, independently done. And the conclusion was not only not a significant addiction liability, but also they saw in the test animals, a substantial reduction in the cravings for morphine, which was the reference drug used in the studies, accounting for why humans experience this feeling of reduction of cravings for dangerous drugs that they're using along the way. Now, the FDA has said inaccurately that Kratom is an opioid. It is not. Dr. Jack Henningfield, one of the leading scientists in the world on substance addictions, addictive substances, indicates that the pharmacologic action of Kratom is not an opioid. It's not an opioid by genetics and plant genetics, and it does not induce the same kinds of effects, but it has some benefits that come from the analgesic effects, increased alertness, reduced pain, and aiding in relieving withdrawal and suppression of opioid cravings. Those are important things about, in fact, about harm reduction. Multiple animal models, according to Dr. Henningfield, show that dose levels of Kratom 100 times greater than people ordinarily consume did not depress respiration, consisting with what's called its biased G protein signaling mechanism of action. That's a significant scientific finding that of course should guide us. The US Congress in FY 20 and 21 budgets, as I referenced earlier, specifically opposed the ban on Kratom because the ban would significantly impede needed research, and the Congress recognized that they were aware of the potential promising results of Kratom for acute and chronic pain patients who seek safer alternatives to sometimes dangerously addictive and potentially deadly prescription drugs. The most important thing, and the standard that I think this Board of Trustees should look at in reevaluating, and we hope you will, your position on Kratom, is the letter that was submitted by the Department of Health and Human Services Assistant Secretary for Health on August the 18th of 2018. That letter officially withdrew the recommendation made by the FDA for the scheduling of Kratom. And if you read that letter, and I brought copies with me, I think I sent each one of you. If you need a copy, I brought some with me. That letter specifically withdrew it because the FDA failed to meet its burden of proof under the Controlled Substance Act to demonstrate that Kratom is dangerous. The safety profile didn't meet the safety standards required by the CSA, and it is not dangerously addictive, and in fact, it's helping people. And so in doing this, he said, instead, we recommend that Kratom not be controlled at this time, and to either temporarily or permanently until scientific research can sufficiently support such an action. But then he said, and I think this is an important lesson for the American public to learn. He said, furthermore, there is significant risk of immediate public health consequences for potentially millions of users of Kratom or its components if they're included in Schedule I. That means it's banned. And he's speaking to the benefits that have been identified in numerous studies about Kratom and its benefits along the way. So we think that that's advice that could be followed here by the town council. Part of the effort that is being pushed here in terms of science is found in the Johns Hopkins research that was concluded and published in early 2020. And of a survey of adult Kratom users who are using Kratom for the purpose of getting off of deadly opioids, they found that 87% of those people reported relief from withdrawal symptoms. And critically, 35% were free from opioids within a year. Now, that's the kind of safety profile that we ought to be encouraging people in a harm reduction environment in order to be involved in. I sent each of you the links to advertisements, and there was many of them, I gave you four, that were part of a national advertising campaign that was shown on all the major networks in late fall of last year. They involve people, families, stories that were critical. Laura Romney, who had suffered from a very rare brain condition, who was, as she describes it, completely doped out on opioids because that was the only solution that their doctor could find for them. When the governor of Utah asked her, when he was signing the Kratom Consumer Protection Act, which applies good regulations on Kratom, and an age limit, by the way, on the sale of Kratom products, he asked her, how did it help you? And she said, from the first day that I took a spoonful of Kratom, which was recommended by a friend, she said, I felt immediate relief, and I've not touched an opioid since. When you look at the story of David DeSalma, who's a decorated military veteran who suffered from service-related injuries, who was going from one Veterans VA Hospital to another, who reports that he felt like an opioid addict, that when he found Kratom, it restored his quality of life. It allowed him to become fully functioning. And those stories are replicated over and over again, and it is the story of a Monument citizen who said that her son's life was restored back. He became a fully functioning citizen. And so we recommend, and we would ask you to consider in the Monument town, that you reconsider your current ban on the sale of Kratom products and consider just imposing an age limit. The state of Colorado has a bill that's being filed in the state legislature, which mirrors the legislation that has already been passed in four states. And last year before COVID hit, we were on track to have more than a dozen more states add to that. We're back on track for that. But it will provide for a regulatory framework that will reduce access of the bad actors. Those are Kratom dealers that are unscrupulously adding dangerous opioids or morphine, fentanyl, and other kinds of bad products to Kratom products. And it provides for appropriate regulations on those to certify that they are contaminant-free. We think that's important to do. In the state of Missouri, that bill passed last week 144 to nothing. It passed in the New Hampshire, I'm sorry, in the New Hampshire legislature. It was moving forward last year at a unanimous vote in the Senate. So we're seeing tremendous progress when public policy officials see the evidence, that they understand that allowing these Kratom consumers the freedom to have access to this, it becomes a family value. And I think it was you, Trustee Stevens, and it resonated with me when you said that you had advocated for this Kratom ban because we want to protect our families. And we do too, at the American Kratom Association. We want to protect them both from getting access to dangerous products that are adulterated, and we want to protect families that are torn apart by the scourge of this opioid addiction crisis in our country. So with that, I'll conclude and be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. We do not have any action items on this particular topic, but I will open it up to the board for any questions they may have or concerns.
Yes. Hello, Mac. Thank you. Do you think there's any other areas in current public issues of mislabeled deaths? I'm just curious. But I do want to appreciate your presentation. Can you give me a little bit more background on how this plant, what is the process of it to becoming a palatable product?
I didn't hear the first comment you made. I'm sorry, but I understood the last question. Kratom is a leaf that is harvested from a tree that grows about 40 to 60 feet high in Indonesia. It's a unique environment, their tropical environment with good soil and water conditions for it to grow. It grows ubiquitously. It is then dried. It is then ground into a powder because you shipping a raw leaf would be virtually impossible contaminant-free. So you would have salmonella, E. coli, heavy metals that would be introduced into the raw leaf plant. So you don't see the importation of the raw leaf very often. I've heard some people do it, but it's really not a good process. So that powder then is shipped to the United States. There have been problems with salmonella because of improper handling. It's typical of all leafy products, and it's true with Kratom. And so the Indonesian government has cooperated with us, and I've seen it personally in visiting Indonesia, that they are now cleaning up the supply chain issues. They dry properly. They use food-grade stainless steel grinding machines rather than World War II coffee grinding machines where the lead would actually flake off of the gears into the Kratom product. They've cleaned that up, and all reputable vendors in the United States actually attest for all those contaminants prior to the manufacture of their products.
Trustee Romanello, does that answer your question?
That answers my question. I have one other comment. I do want to say this. I was fascinated by your presentation, and I appreciate the information. This was a completely serendipitous. I was in Arizona over Christmas, and we had hiked red rocks in Sedona. And because this was fresh on our board topic, there was a coffee shop in Sedona that actually served Kratom beverages and sold Kratom powder. I wanted to find out what this was all about, so I had a Kratom beverage, and I bought a small bag of Kratom powder. I found that there is no, so everybody's clear on this. There is no high, there is no altered state, there is no out of control. I wanted to know a little bit more about the process. They were very proud of the purity of their product, as you talked about, you know, being certified and not mixed with anything else. And all I could experience from, and there's no desire or addictive nature to it. It's not like I feel like I have to have it or think about it or anything like that. But it is more like a cup of coffee, or actually more like a cup of green tea. It gives you a clarity, a like caffeine, but without shakiness or a rapid heartbeat, a little bit less of that kind of a response. And I found it to be a great pre-workout, as a cup of coffee or a shot of espresso or a pre-workout powder from Vitamin Cottage would be. And that's what I found from it. But I do appreciate your presentation, sir. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And had I known you had that experience, I'd let you have the podium.
I have a question. What is your interest in the town of Monument? I'm sure if you went to Denver or Boulder, that they would be more than welcome, you know, more than welcoming as far as Kratom and opening up shops and things like that. We're just a very small town. Why is there such an interest in coming here? In fact, it was a few years ago that we had another presentation about Kratom. It seems like every few years, you guys are coming back and asking, you know, what's going on, you know, and trying to sell the Kratom product here, or not sell it, I guess, is probably not the right term. But what's the interest in Monument, I guess?
It's a great question, Trustee Stevens. My wife asked me the same question when I was leaving. She said, why are you going to Monument, Colorado? Most of the presentations I do frankly are before state legislatures. And where there might be a very large county, San Diego County, for example, and I make presentations about it. The thing that brought me here was that phone call from this American Kratom Association member, because we represent consumers, not vendors, and she made this plea, you've got to come. And she asked me to convince you to please change it to an age limit and not a ban. And so I said I would do my best, but that's why I'm here. I normally wouldn't be. Now, I can tell you that in locations in small communities where bans have been proposed, you'll find that there are many Kratom consumers who will step up and say, now, these are proposed bans. I mean, it's more difficult, obviously, where there's a ban in place. Although Monroe, Louisiana, just changed their ban to an age limit here about a month ago. But the reason that they speak is that it's changed their lives for the better. And when you listen to these testimonies, they're moving. And if you watch the commercials that I sent you the links to, you really should, you'll get the flavor for how people's lives have been improved. So I'm here to speak as that voice for a Kratom consumer in Monument. I did it because she motivated me. It was an inspiring story that she told me about her son, and that's why I'm here. But I hope that you will consider my being the voice for her this evening in this presentation. And I hope I don't have to come back, but not that I don't like Monument. It's a busy time for us in a number of these states.
So I take it you're the national representative or lobbyist going throughout the country?
Yeah, my mother told me I couldn't tell people I was a lobbyist. She wanted me to say I was a piano player and a bordello. She thought that was more reputable. So I consider myself an advocate, but I am a lobbyist for the American Kratom Association, yes.
Okay, other questions from the board? Mayor Pro Tim Elliott, do you have anything?
Yes, I do. So the last time Kratom was presented to the board, it's not clear to me exactly what the timeframe was. There was somebody interested in manufacturing Kratom in Monument, at a facility in Monument. So Mr. Haddow, are you, your sole focus at this point is just being able to sell the product to, out of a CBD store or whatever in Monument?
Yes, we would like it to be sold in health food stores and convenience stores, in the CVS, that kind of thing. It was sold in Walmarts before, and GNC stores until the FDA started their attack on Kratom. So yes, we would like to see it sold there. And I would add that a lot of this disinformation from the FDA has continued, even though this letter on December, I'm sorry, August 18th of 2018 formally withdrew it, and the FDA requested that it not be released publicly. And they have for the last two and a half years continued to fill the information pipeline with what is clearly disinformation as characterized by their boss, which is the Assistant Secretary for Health. Why are they doing this? The day after that letter was signed, the Assistant, the Commissioner of FDA started tweeting about how harmful Kratom was and how it's an opioid. Those are wrong factually, but they have an agenda. And it's the same agenda that they had back in the early 90s against vitamins and dietary supplements. They told the same story. Dietary supplements are killing people. They were right about adulterated, poorly formulated products. But Congress had to step in and say, no, you're not going to have this overregulation. They passed the Dietary Supplement Health and Education Act. We're here now 20 years later and more, and we're hearing the same stories. But I would hope that you would consider a reputable Kratom manufacturer to locate here. It's a great business, and it's growing. When I first started with the American Kratom Association, there were three to five million consumers in America. Today, there are more than 15 million. It's a great business. It's great for your town. And if it's properly regulated and sold properly, it's a great product for your citizens.
Mayor Pro Tim Elliott, did you have anything else?
Yeah, I do have another question. So you're from the American Kratom Association. You must be aware of what's happening throughout the US with Kratom. So is Kratom sold in Colorado Springs, and is it sold north of us in, I guess, Castle Rock?
I attended a Castle Rock workshop a year ago, and it is sold there with an age limitation. They wanted, the initial proposal was to ban it. I came out to testify to the Colorado Legislature and happened to conform, so I came down to Castle Rock, just a little north of you. And they elected to do an age-only restriction. I think it was 18 and under, if I remember correctly. In Denver, it's banned. Denver City, it's banned on the metrogenine and seven-hydroxy-metrogenine levels. We actually support there being a maintenance of the alkaloid of the plant, not synthesizing it or enhancing it in any way. And that's what our state legislation does, this before the Colorado Legislature. So we support part of what Denver's done. We don't like the ban, but we like the idea that they're looking at those alkaloid levels and maintaining the level that God put into that plant and not enhancing and tinkering with it.
Okay, is it sold in Colorado Springs?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any more questions, Mayor.
Trustee Clark, did you have any questions?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, Trustee LeKind?
Yeah, so you said that you've got 15 million consumers nationwide that are using these products?
Yes, sir.
And you've found one person in Monument's 10,000 residents that appealed to you to come speak to us. You have numbers in the town of Monument that exceed one? Because you're talking about putting products in a dozen retail stores for 10,000 people.
Yeah, my apologies if I misled you on this. It isn't just one. One who called me personally. She got my phone number and called me. We have a database of Kratom consumers that numbers about 180,000 people around the country. And when we put out an appeal to Kratom consumers in the town of Monument, I think we got, my recollection, like 48 people said they would support us if we were to have a petition. I think we got, my recollection, like 48 people said they would support us if we were to have a petition that we wanted to do. Now, that's in a fairly small town. And, and so that's, that's the only data that I have that I could support you now in the county. Is it Eagle Rock County or?
El Paso.
El Paso County, thank you. And El Paso County was far larger for some reason disproportionate to Monument. Maybe that's because of the ban. It's in place here in Monument, I don't know. But in Colorado, it is one of the largest kratom consumer markets in the country in terms of state level.
Thank you.
Trustee Enroe?
I do not have any questions.
Okay. Trustee Stevens, did you have another question?
Just briefly, in your letter that you enclosed with Brett Gerard, he was saying that there is a lot of research that has not yet been done. And what concerns me is that the kratom, there's such a hurry to move kratom along that it almost smacks of the smoking industry that 100 years ago, they, they actually told people that cigarettes were good for your health because it helped you lose weight and it also helped you relax and de-stress and, you know, and helped to calm you down. And so therefore it was overall good. And, but then as research came in over time, they learned that obviously quite the opposite was the case. How do you know that, and why should we believe you versus the FDA and other organizations like Mayo Clinic and things like that that have said that? Why, given the fact that research, I guess that was our concern is that we have a preemptive act to ban the sale of kratom. Now, if you go to Colorado Springs and buy it and then use it, we're not restricted. We haven't restricted that. So it's not the use of kratom that we're restricting, but it's the actual sale of kratom that we're concerned about because that becomes a marketing issue. And now you're, you have to promote a product. And just like the smoking industry or cigarette industry promoted cigarettes to many people's detriments, they died horrible deaths. I personally had an aunt that had a terrible death with, with cigarettes because she was two packs a day. So why should we believe, I guess to sum up my question, why should we believe you versus the FDA? And, and so, because you're, and why can we not wait for more research to come out? Why do we have to act now in order to adapt your policies?
Thank you for that question. The first response would be that if you're weighing the credibility of the claims about kratom, then I would ask you to weigh the FDA's position, which has been a longstanding anti-natural product position over decades, against what the National Institutes of Drug Abuse says, which is not to ban it, to make it accessible and to study it. They put $15 million into studies right now. And they are now looking at establishing what they call their five-year supply chain of kratom products from Indonesia, kratom materials for additional studies. So NIDA is on board with the position that we've taken, which is let's study it, but let's not ban it now because of the evidence that's there. And the evidence is found and it's reflected in the Congress's report language in both appropriations bills of FY 20 and 21. And then, great question about why should we not listen to Mayo Clinic or WebMD? It's because they have agreements with the FDA to exchange information and circulate information and it becomes a circular loop, a feedback loop of information. I can send you additional studies. I didn't want to overwhelm you, but the highly credible institutions, Johns Hopkins University, believes that this is a safe product used responsibly. And the data clearly shows that. We probably have 50 or 60 peer-reviewed published articles that speak to how kratom can be a salvation for people that otherwise would be entrapped in the opioid crisis and the pandemic that's, but for COVID would be still the most significant thing that's killing 80,000 Americans a year. So they see that as the, a harm reduction measure and the safety profile. And I would point out that Admiral Guyer, in his letter, pointed out the studies that have to be done in order for the FDA to meet its burden to prove it should be banned. That's what those studies, if you look at on page three, it specifically lists those five areas. But that's only telling the FDA, don't come back with another scheduling recommendation until you get these five scientific areas fulfilled. Not that kratom has to, now, I'm not suggesting we shouldn't do more research on kratom. We should. There's potential value here, like many plants, that kratom might fill even yet unknown things, therapeutic values. But we don't think any kratom manufacturer seller should make a therapeutic claim that's not approved by the Food and Drug Administration. We, we report people to do that because that's illegal. But the intended use of a kratom product by a consumer who's informed about the product itself, buying it in order to use it for a purpose that promotes their health and well-being, we think that's a freedom they should have. And we think the ban that you've instituted gets in the way of that. I understand it's only a ban on sale, not on possession or use, if I understand it correctly. So, but that ban on the sale is an impediment that might, might be an impediment to a kid that's maybe struggling and just has to get something to relieve the symptoms that they're experiencing with opioids. Why not make that part of a family community, the family values community here in Boulder? In order, don't make them go someplace else in order to buy it because it may be, and I hate to say this, inconvenient and not timely. Let's, let's offer it because the science clearly demonstrates the right public policy today is to let it be available with, with good information about what's in the product and not adulterated. That's the key to it. And not selling it to kids. We think that parents should participate in that discussion. By the way, it's not popular with kids. I think I mentioned it, foul tasting. You, you really don't want to take this, doesn't give the euphoric high. If you get that, it's because it's adulterated. But, you know, kids aren't naturally going to be drawn to it unless it is adulterated. So we think that's important as a consideration in your policy.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim Elliott, did you have another comment?
I do, I do have a question. In regards to the research, Mr. Haddow, I actually do research for a living, drug and medical device research. And it's not clear to me then when you, when you say that there's been research there, but there needs to be more research, what organized controlled trials have been done in a large population across the United States to project a very good safety profile that you mentioned? When we go by anecdotal evidence, such as lack of reporting of this or that to the FDA or whomever, that's just anecdotal evidence. And the FDA doesn't even accept that type of evidence to allow a drug or device to make claims. And so I'd like to have a little bit more clarity on the robustness or the rigor of studies that have been done, even though I know, I acknowledge that you said more studies need to be done.
Thank you for that question. The key here is that the proper classification of kratom is that it's sold under the Food, Drug and Cosmetic Act as a food. If it, if a intended use is for a dietary supplement, it must pass the rigorous procedure of the Food and Drug Administration to make what's called structure function claims using the new dietary ingredient notification process, which the FDA regulates. If you want to sell the product as a drug, then you have to do a new drug application that requires extensive human clinical trials. Those studies are important if a manufacturer wants to sell it as a prescription drug. And to your point, madam, that's exactly what should be done for that classification of a product. But for foods and dietary supplements, the standard of studies are animal studies. That's the requirement. Now, there are human study, clinical trials that are going on. And the Congress just funded a human clinical trial to be done by HHS on kratom because they're interested in what its therapeutic benefits might be in human populations. But the gold standard for dietary supplements and foods in terms of addiction liability and its effect on humans are animal studies. There is a study that's being conducted by Dr. Jack Henningfield that will be published in two months, takes two months to go through the peer review process, that looked at kratom against the FDA's protocol for, for using oxycodone. And they found at 400 times the amount of kratom that an individual could possibly consume in a day, there was no respiratory suppression from the kratom animals. There, there was some sedation, no deaths. And for the oxycodone, exactly what you would expect. So in terms of the premier science and research that's being done right now by NIDA and independently, I think we're headed, headed towards that objective with more refined science. We need to know a little bit more about the other alkaloids in the kratom plant and whether or not there are in fact counter indications. If you're taking a prescription medication, should you be taking kratom at the same time? Those kinds of studies are evidence-based. And the FDA does recognize that in terms of their dietary supplement regulation today. We don't regulate dietary supplements aggressively. We wait for reports of either contraindications with another substance or an adverse event report. And we help them, by the way, with kratom products. When we, we see those kinds of evidences, we report it to the FDA. That's the only standard for food that's intent, a kratom that's intended as a food. And that's a misnomer. That's the classification under the Food, Drug and Cosmetic Act. It's an herbal botanical product or as a dietary supplement, if you want to make structure function claims. We support all of that. But the FDA's not, they misclassify calling it an unapproved drug because it's not intended to be a drug unless a manufacturer wants to make it that. Then they have to go through the regulatory process.
Mayor Pro Tim, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
I'll send some additional studies that will help too. I, we've got a lot. I didn't want to overwhelm you, but there are dozens.
Any other questions from the board? Seeing none, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you and thanks from the kratom consumer here in Colorado. I hope I was a good voice for her.
Now we move on to water projects update. Mr. Foreman?
As previously you'd approved for us to get a $22 million loan to be able to do projects in our water division within three years. We dedicated to you that we do semi-annual updates on those projects. And Tom Tharnish is here to do those updates for you this time, to tell you where we are in the process, the progress of several of our projects. We have about seven projects that are going on right now. So I'll introduce Tom and Tom, take it away.
Okay. What I decided to do for this presentation is describe real quickly a project intent. And again, the intent here is to bring you up to date on the latest information that we currently have based on all the projects that fit underneath the $22 million COP bond issuance. Projects listed below are the ones I'm going to briefly touch on. Well number 10 tie-in to treatment plant four and five. And the rest of them I'll introduce as I get to them, just to save a little bit of time. Next one. So the first one up here is the well number 10, the treatment plant four and five. Again, this is tying in the discharge to the new well that finished drilling a few weeks ago. And now they're setting up the drive unit and the power from a, what they call a step-up transformer to, to make that, to pump that water because it's such a deep well. As you can see on this one, the next step for us is the water quality and yield data needed. That, samples have already been taken, so we're awaiting results hopefully in the next week or two. That will determine where the treatment process in the current plant is going to be enough to make that into drinking water. The project that got combined with that, the expansion of treatment plant four and five, that is basically, that contract has been awarded design and engineering several weeks ago. And now we're just making sure the preferred location for that. It looks like it's going to go directly to the east of the current structure and tie that together. We had a meeting last week just to discuss a few of the details on that. So that project is on schedule, on time and on budget. And the next one, water storage tank on Monument Hill. This was the newest one that I believe, I can't remember if it was the previous meeting or the one before, where you awarded the design engineering to JDS Hydro for this one. As far as the design of the tank, we have a meeting scheduled, I believe sometime tomorrow in the afternoon to discuss this. The site location is currently in question right now. We're going to be at one or two sites. And both town manager and me and the town attorney are working through some logistics for that to make that project move along to stay on schedule. The next slide up here is the water tank project at Forest View Estates. Again, this is the project we started, I believe, back in 2017 or so. And then we went through a couple of years of lawsuits and everything else. And now we're finally been moving ahead. I had just received the actual 90% tank design about two hours before this meeting. So we're again on schedule for this one. Waterline quarter surveying and subservice utility engineering is underway. That is, that takes quite a while because it's two and a half miles of piping to connect that tank to our system. And also requires a lot of coordination from El Paso County through the 1041 permit process, CDOT right away along Highway 105. We have to cross into the railroad, so there's some negotiations with Union Pacific to initiate that. And one private property that we're talking to right now is a small corner section of their property that the water main has to cross through. That's the latest information on that project. Next one up here is the re-drill of well three. I believe at the last meeting you had approved the design engineering to Light of Water Solutions. The drilling RFP is out right now. We've had at least two drillers come down and take a look at the site and use it and ends up with three or four. So that'll be one that'll come to you, if not in the next meeting, the meeting after, to award the drilling contract, similar to what we did with well number 10. This well is actually moving about 100 and, I believe, 120, 130 feet to the south of the current well near the Arlene's Beans Restaurant. So that'll be relocated to that site. And then it will utilize the same piping, vaults and valves and meters in order to save a lot of time and money on that project. And the next one is one of our long-term projects, been going on quite a while. Radium removal office expansion, the radium removal project. We did get approval from CD PAT approving the process that we're going to use to remove the radium from the water. The building expansion design is in progress. And we expect in sometime early March that we should be ready to, close to putting that out to bid. And then, then we'll take the next steps once the contract is awarded. That contract again will have to come to the board for approval as all our construction contracts do. The next or the last of the major projects that's currently underway is the Raspberry Lane Waterline. This project has been near and dear to our, most of our water operators because if you remember the history, this particular project involves replacing several thousand feet of water main and rebuilding an entirely new road, replacing 48 different taps to 48 of our customers there. What makes this more difficult is it's a very narrow road. Here's a lot of utilities already in the ground. And there are going to be sections of this project where a dozen or so customers at a time will lose access to their driveways. So we're making arrangements for them to, to make up for that so they have somewhere to park their vehicles for a short term. This is one of those very well coordinated. We're planning on a neighborhood meeting. We were trying to get it scheduled for the end of February, but due to some logistics, we're going to have to do that the first week in March. And once we explain that to the neighborhood by holding that meeting, we'll take all their questions and get with the engineers. Once the contract is awarded sometime in, I think it's late March, I'm looking at the schedule right here. Contract award would be 5th of April. So right after that contract is awarded, we'll have a second meeting with all the affected units. And again, we'll give them a point of contact with the construction company plus someone from our staff. And so that we're available if any hiccups occur during this. We're going to try to break this up into groups of 12 units at a time so that we're not impacting the whole subdivision at once. So it's a very, lot longer drawn-out project, but it involves basically a full rebuild of the road and entire replacement of the water main and 48 new isolation valves for all the units. And then the last slide I have, future bond funded. These are the projects that are still included in the COP bond issuance, but we have not sent them out for RFPs just yet. We've had a few delays trying to catch up and make sure that what we have going is, is running smoothly and that the rest of these will come along. Some of them will be started this summer and this fall. And then the rest will pick up steam probably early next year, depending on how much we can coordinate. And I want to thank our project manager, Erica Romero, and also Steve Sheffield, our assistant director, and our intern, Sam Wilson or Samantha Wilson. director, and our intern Sam Wilson, or Samantha Wilson, have all contributed heavily to not only putting this together, but to keep me up to date and checking out on things, following up on meetings that we need to schedule and additional data that's relevant to these projects. So I'll take any questions you have and anything I presented. Remember, everything I talked about tonight is things that are currently underway.
Okay, questions from the board? I got one statement. Okay, Mr. Foreman, you had another statement?
Yeah, just wanted to, like Tom did, thank Erica Romero and Sam for supporting Tom on this project management. As you notice, you know, we've got some pro forma sheets and stuff like that that we can give you on the, on what the projects are doing and where they're at in time, and we'll be presenting these to you every six months unless you want them earlier than that, but they're, they're working with, as you approved, assistant to the town manager. Erica's performing that role as project manager over this, helping Tom work with the consultants and reporting and tracking for Public Works and the Board of Trustees.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Item five, ordinance number 062021, an ordinance granting a franchise by the Town of Monument to Mountain View Electric, Mr. Ricci.
Thank you, Mayor, Board of Trustees. This is a fairly straightforward agreement from our perspective. The town has entered into these franchise agreements with MBEA since at least the 90s, going back through our records, I was able to find records at least into the mid 90s. The latest iteration, and what this franchise agreement pays for is the town maintaining infrastructure and rights away, right-of-way used by Mountain View Electric Association. The most recent agreement was signed in 2006 for three, with three five-year terms, those are, that's coming up, the end of that is coming up this summer. The renewal agreement that's in front of you has been proposed for a 15-year term, and by law, these continue to run month to month even if you don't renew them. So in this particular case, this is a 3% franchise fee for the use of right-of-way and town infrastructure. It really is set up so that it is based upon population and inflation with the cost of the services provided by MBEA. So from that perspective, the terms here are no different, are not substantially different than the one approved in 2006 and the one approved around 1991. So we recommend your approval.
Questions from the board?
So previously, these were five-year terms, and now we were going to grant them a 15-year term.
That is correct.
And what's the precedent that sets us from, why are we, why are we going to give them a 15-year term when two five-year terms seemed to be fine before?
We gave them a 15-year agreement last time with, that was broken up into five automatically renewing, I mean, three automatic renewing five-year terms. So essentially, that's, we're just taking out the automatically renewing five-year terms. The percent, the terms of this agreement have not changed substantially, like I said, since the early 90s. This is also the level of franchise fee that we charge utilities in the area. Everybody gets charged the same amount under the same terms. Thank you.
Other questions by the board? This is a public hearing item, so I will open this item up to public comments. Do we have anyone in the hall wishing to speak on this? Mr. Anderson, do we have anybody online? Mr. Lee, will you please go ahead with your comments?
First of all, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Sorry, I'm really nervous. I have not spoke at any type of government thing whatsoever, but yeah, my, first of all, my name is Scott Hayden Calhoun Lee. I live in Falcon, Colorado, a little bit away from you guys, but, so yeah, like I said, I'm pretty nervous, so this isn't like an entirely comprehensive list, but I would like to give out an email address at a later time, so if any of you guys have any other questions for me or anything like that, you can feel free to. I'm here to speak about the kratom ban. I was-
Sir, will you hold on a minute?
Yeah.
We are on public comments, the public comment portion of an ordinance granting franchise fees for Mountain View Electric. This ordinance, this public comment period is for this ordinance at this time. Later in the meeting, we will have public comments for other items. Do you mind waiting till that time for your kratom comments?
Yes, sorry, I really apologize. I did not realize that.
No problem. Mr. Anderson, do we have anybody else that would like to comment on ordinance number 062021, franchise fee by the Town of Monument and Monument, Mountain View Electric Association? Okay. Do we have any board questions or questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, at this time, I will go ahead and close the public, public comment portion of this ordinance and look for a motion.
I move ordinance number 062021, an ordinance granting a franchise to the Town of Monument, by the Town of Monument to the Mountain View Electric Association.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Hogan?
Trustee Anru?
Yes.
Trustee Lakind?
Yes.
Trustee Romanella?
Yes.
Trustee Stevens?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes. That motion passed 7-0. Next item, ordinance number 072021, an ordinance approving the purchase of real property. Details regarding the financing of purchase, Mr. Foreman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Board. The commercial property located at 259 Beacon Light Road and owned by Mr. Norton R. Smith has been offered to the town for purchase at the cost of $1.2 million. In a previous meeting, you directed me to negotiate a contract for the current Code One building at 259 Beacon Light. $1.2 million is the offer price from the owner to the town, and they're asking for $50,000 worth of earnest money to be delivered after this meeting, probably sometime tomorrow, if you approve this. As discussed, the purchase of this building will provide space for our public works staff, including our water staff. It will, it will preclude the need to build additional office space budgeted in 2021 and possibly in the future. This is an amazing opportunity for the town to expand its ability to provide office space for our current needs as well as into the future at a much less cost than building new office space. Currently, we are scheduling an inspection and appraisal prior to closing. We have a 2006 survey on the property when it was replatted, and also it includes all furniture left behind by Code One. I'm going to turn it over to Andrew to discuss how to, how we can pay for the building and some of the changes to the ordinance that we're presenting to you today.
Thank you. The, the issue for, the two main issues for this ordinance, from a legal perspective, are that there's an ordinance, under our rules, ordinance required to purchase this property and expend this money out of the two-way funds. The specific use of two-way funds to purchase town buildings for the purposes of administration and the like was approved in 2005 by Monument voters. However, in 2009, in ordinance 082009, the Board of Trustees directed that all of it go towards new water projects. And so what this ordinance does is it allows both for the purchase of the property, which has been authorized by the voters, which is important from a Tabor perspective, but it also allows the use of the funds as the voters initially allowed and not how the 2009 ordinance limited it. So this would allow you to take cash from the two-way fund to pay for the property.
And as I've explained before, we have nearly $6 million in the two-way fund that is not being used to pay any debt service that we incurred last year, nor does it have any projects accrued to it. So this would be 1.2 million of the current balance that we have in the two-way fund, and once again, our two-way fund will generate about 1.6 million dollars a year, of which 1.2 is being spent on the $22 million bond.
Before we get to board comments, I'm going to go ahead and open this up for public comment. Do we have anybody in the hallway wishing to comment on this item? And Mr. Anderson, do we have anyone from the public that would like to comment on ordinance number 072021, purchase of real property? Okay, I will leave the public hearing open while the board discusses. Questions from the board?
You said the appraisal is scheduled for tomorrow or something? No, I'm sorry, we have to put the earnest money down tomorrow, $50,000. The appraisal is scheduled for March 12th. Okay, and what if the appraisal comes in significantly different than the, than the sale? If it comes in significantly lower, would be the negative impact for us, and so I'd come back to the board at that time. We, we have an out in the contract, and if it doesn't appraise for the value that they're offering it for, then we have an out not to purchase the building. Okay, thank you.
Is there any threat of them not selling it with appraisal? I mean, we're already under contract, so if the appraisal is significantly higher, is there a concern there?
No, they, they've made the offer at 1.2, so we're contracted for 1.2. If it appraises for $2 million, we still only pay 1.2.
Additional questions from the board? Mr. Anderson, do we have anybody online wishing to comment? Okay. Well, at this point, I will close the public hearing portion of this ordinance and bring it back to the board for a motion.
I make a motion to approve ordinance number 07-2021, an ordinance approving the purchase of real property, Lot 1, JJ Tracks Replat, located at 259 Beacon Light Road, Monument, Colorado, and providing other details regarding the financing of the purchase.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Ms. Hogan?
Trustee Stevens?
Yes.
Trustee Lakind?
Yes.
Trustee Anru?
Yes.
Trustee Romanella?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Elliott?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
No.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes. That motion passes 5-1. Item 6A, resolution number 172021, resolution setting forth findings of facts and conclusions. Mr. Manning?
Yes, good evening, Mayor Wilson and trustees. This is a three-step process, this is step two. Step one occurred in January where you established that the submittal of the petition was properly signed by the applicant. This, this step is to take step two, which is to confirm that it has the essential physical elements primarily, that it's 1/6 contiguity or greater to the existing city limits, and it is greater in this case. The other thing it establishes by establishing that is that there is a community of interests between the two because of that contiguity. Therefore, that's the resolution we're acting on tonight. The resolution also specifies that ordinance will be brought forth on March 1st for the actual annexation. At that point in time, annexation agreement will be presented along with the planning commission recommendation, a lot more information, particularly what you already see in your packet from the narrative of the applicant. Again, this particular piece of property is south of Baptist Road, south of the roundabout as an extension of Old Dunbar Road, it's called Woodcarver Road, it's about a half mile south, it's about 10 acres, a little bit more. With that, entertain your questions if you have any.
Questions from the board?
Are there any residents involved in this? Is there property that we're-
The property is currently vacant.
Okay, so it's just vacant, so there's no vote that has to take place or anything?
No, it's all one owner of 100% of the property.
Okay.
And if I'm picturing that right, there's no residence even in the area around it, correct?
If there is, it's in the county to the southwest.
Additional questions from the board or a motion on this item?
I'll move to approve resolution 172021, a resolution setting forth findings of fact and conclusions concerning proposed annexation to the Town of Monument of an area known as Native Sun Construction Annexation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Trustee Lakind?
Yes.
Trustee Anru?
Yes.
Can you reiterate that? I didn't hear.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Oh, thank you. Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Romanella?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Elliott?
Yes.
Trustee Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes. That motion passes 7-0. Thank you, Mr. Manning. At this time, we will open up for general public comments. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. Do we have anybody from the public that would like to comment? Okay, Mr. Lee, go ahead.
Thank you. I apologize for that, my bad. But yeah, I just wanted to let every, everyone know that this is a comprehensive list. I didn't know that we were going to just have five minutes, but I wanted to share my kratom story with you all, but first and foremost, I'd like to let everyone know that I have struggled with alcoholism and addiction throughout my life. I currently am three years sober and I go to AA. I had shattered my wrist when I was younger in a longboard accident, and because of that, I have chronic pain in my wrist, and because of how it was situated when it was healing, I have chronic back pain. And I started using kratom about three years ago, and because I couldn't find any pain management medication that would work, because I obviously have a high potential to abuse things, I couldn't take any type of opiates or anything like that. I tried CBD, but it was just too expensive on my budget to be able to help. I tried turmeric, NSAIDs, Tylenol, I went to a chiropractor, I tried yoga, so many different things to help manage my pain, and none of them really seemed to work, nor were they, like, within my price range to be able to do. And during my using as an alcoholic, I also had damaged my liver through that. I ended up going to rehab for about a year, and now I've been sober ever since. And whenever I take kratom, I live in Falcon, by the way, but when I take kratom, it allows me to function as a normal person would. My pain doesn't completely go away, it gets minimized significantly, and I'll take about six grams of kratom a day, and in it, I can still function, I can still move around, I'm able to actually participate in things with my son rather than just sit and complain about my back all day and not really get anything done. And, sorry, I'm so really nervous, but, oh crap, sorry, excuse me. Yeah, and in the time since I've taken kratom, my, I've been going to the doctor to check because I had heard that kratom causes issues with your liver and things along those line, lines, and since I've had my levels checked and everything seems to be going just fine from my doctor- And since I've had my levels checked and everything seems to be going just fine from my doctor. And so that was a, a myth that I had heard from just looking around online. And kratom has affected my life in such a positive way from someone who can't take a lot of medications and am limited because of my liver to take certain things. This has been literally a diamond in the rough for me, and it's something that that has made a huge difference in my life. And personally, I'd like to say that I believe that kratom should definitely be researched more and that it should be allowed for adults like it is in Falcon and in Colorado Springs, since it's helped me regain my life and has the potential to help a lot of other people who are in the same situation as me and are really limited on their choices and/or may have addiction issues as well. And, um, with that, I'll go ahead and, um, close up, thank you, really appreciate it, let me be here.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Mr. Anderson, do we have anyone else that would like to make, to make public comment? Mr. LeVere, would you like to make comment, please?
Yes, thank you, um, first of all, name is Robert LeVere, resident of Mon- uh, one of the things I wanted to talk to you tonight about is the, uh, resolution on Mountain View Electric. Um, I was not aware of the Mountain View Electric proposal tonight. I do have some concerns because as residents of Monument, we only have access to one electric company or one voice. And I know in other locations in the United States, we have access to multiple electric company. I think in the, uh, I, spirit of fairness or capitalism, we should have access to multiple, uh, electric companies or electric company providers. Um, and I think limiting our, ourselves to one electric company, um, limits the, the competition value that we would receive from, uh, multiple companies. Uh, I'm not sure if that's what this resolution accomplishes, I'm not sure if that's what we were aiming for tonight, but I think limiting us to one electric company is problematic, uh, in that I have solar panels on my house. I generate near zero, um, balance on my electricity usage. For about three months during the winter time, I do use more electricity from the grid than I do from my electric panels. But for the three months of the year, I generate more electric than I use. For example, uh, this month, I just received my ba- my bill in the mail, my bill is forty seven dollars. That is twelve dollars above and beyond the access fees that is required by Mountain View. The access few, the access fees every month by Mountain View is thirty five dollars, and that is significantly higher by about twelve dollars or more than any other electric provider in the local area. If I went down to Colorado Springs Utilities, if I live just a few miles south, my access fees would be about eight to ten dollars a month for Colorado Springs Utilities. So I, I do have concerns that Mountain View Electric is not the best choice for, for ca- for Monument. I'm not saying they're a bad company, I'm saying that the access fees that they charge is pretty outrageous for our residents, especially when guys like me have spent the extra fifteen thousand dollars to put, uh, panels in our houses, spend the money to be net zero and spend the money to, to be responsible in the community. So I do have concerns with the, the bill that, or the resolution you guys, uh, voted on this evening, and I would like you guys to consider to at least reconsider your, your, your decisions and/or reconsider what, what that, the implication of this, that decision is, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LeVere. Uh, Mr. Anderson, is there anybody else online that would like to make comment? Ms. Swerengen, go ahead, please.
Evening trustees, hope everybody's doing well. Uh, I wanted to comment on, uh, Mr. Tharnish and his presentation. I think that it's very important that all of those projects get taken care of as, uh, was talked about in the presentation. My concern is, though, that we are still not facing the fact that Monument has absolutely no renewable water source. And I don't see anything in any of those projects that, uh, leads me to believe that we're making any progress or putting out any effort to obtain a renewable water source. Every time I open up the O C N, it seems like there's an, an article about all of the water districts around us who are actively pursuing and being very successful in getting renewable water. And unfortunately, I'm not seeing that for Monument. So I was curious if perhaps Mr. Tharnish at some point in time could put on a presentation explaining to us if we are trying to pursue renewable water and if we are, what that would be, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swerengen. Mr. Anderson, is there anybody else who would like to make public comment? Okay, and we have no one in the hallway waiting to put, wait, make public comment, thank you. Um, we will move forward with board authorization items. The only item we have is Fountain Creek Watershed District Appointment. The Fountain Creek Watershed has a opening coming up on their board, and it would be in Monument's best interest to have a representative on this. When I asked for, uh, volunteers, I received two individuals that would like to volunteer, and that is trustee Clark and trustee Romanello. So I am more than happy to nominate both of them. Is there any comments from anybody on the board in regards to this particular item? I would suggest, since trustee Clark is on some other, uh, boards and, and has, and is involved in other ways, uh, that we put trustee Romanello on this one. Does that work for you, trustee Clark?
Absolutely, I will do whatever you want, mayor.
Okay, uh, trustee Romanello, are you good with that?
I'm willing to do it, and I have a great relationship, uh, with Mr. Tharnish that I've worked on for the last three years and feel like I can represent our town's needs for water on that board.
Okay, is the board in agreements with, uh, pointing trustee Romanello to the Fountain Creek Watershed District Appointment? Now, this does not guarantee that we will get this seat, this is, uh, only us asking El Paso County who appoints the seat to allow us to appoint a member. So is the board okay with that?
Yes.
I agree.
Okay. Sounds good, trustee Romanello, I will get, uh, additional information to you on how that, uh, what the process is.
Thank you.
Is there any other board authorization items? Okay, seeing none, I will ask one more time if we have any public comments, and then I will close the public comment period. Okay. Ms. Galagos, did you, would you like to make public comment?
Yes, I would like to make a public comment, thank you so much for letting me into, into the meeting. I had just gotten off of work late, but I wanted to, um, just address the trustees of Monument. I've been a resident of Monument for twenty five years, my husband and I are homeowners here in Monument, and our children attend, um, schools here in Monument as well. And I wanted to talk about the kratom, um, distribution or the selling of kratom here in Monument. I am actually, I, um, was able to read the article that was online today regarding kratom and it coming up before the Board of Trustees this evening. And I just wanted to let you know that about ten years ago, I had to undergo a hysterectomy that left me with substantial scar tissue. And I tried various options and different types of treatment for pain control. I tried dry needling, um, different, um, tramadol, just different types of pain relievers and could never get any relief for my pain because of these issues that came up after my hysterectomy. And I was just introduced to kratom about a year ago, before that, I had never even heard of it. But I need to tell you that, um, the way that kratom eases my pain is, is like something I've never had before. It's like, um, to me, it, it soothes my pain better than ibuprofen. I don't, I, I've never felt a high, I don't think that it should be classified the way that it's classified. And, um, I, I really hope that the Board of Trustees goes ahead and votes to allow, um, sale of kratom here in Monument, because it has really proved to be worthwhile for myself, for my health, and for my chronic pain that I have every day. And so that's all that I wanted to, to bring to your attention and to say on behalf of kratom, I think it's a great product. And I think, um, I don't think a lot of people are really informed about it. But I think it's a great product, and I think that it should be able to be sold here in Monument.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Anderson, do we have any other public comments? Okay, at this time, I will close our public comment portion. And we will move on to the next item on our agenda, Town Manager Report. The Town Manager just clo- or included the annual report in our board packets. Did anybody have any questions or concerns on that item? Mr. Foreman, did you have any additional comments on that item?
I did have one thing I would like to say.
Go ahead.
I'd like to commend Mr. Foreman on the impeccable format that he's using and the easy to read and understand language used. I think he's doing a beautiful job on that report with him and his team.
Great comment, thank you, uh, Mr. Foreman, did you have a comment?
Yes, I did, I'd like to thank staff, including, uh, Madeline Van Hook for this, uh, for the coordination of staff reports, design coordination and completion of the finished report for the Board of Trustees. Um, I can't tell you how hard they worked on this, uh, this started months ago, and, uh, they, they really, uh, put out the effort to come out with it like, like, like the, um, like the board said, uh, an impeccable product that the staff put out. So I really appreciate the hard work by staff and led by Madeline Van Hook on this, so, okay.
Any other questions or comments on the, uh, annual report? Okay, seeing none, we will move forward with Board of Trustee comments, do we have any Board of Trustee comments?
I, I do have a couple.
Go ahead.
I would like to, uh, uh, make my comments in regard to the renewable water that was brought up by Mrs. or Ms. Swerengen, I apologize if I said that wrong. Um, I agree that we should have had long ago a renewable water purchase system in place. And I have been struggling to communicate that with the board for, I think, over a year and a half now. And I'm wondering if we can finally put it on the, on the table for discussion, possibly at the next meeting, an actual purchase of renewable water, uh, syst- systematic and in conjunction with what everyone else around us is doing. So that's number one. And then I'd like to talk to that, uh, gentleman's comment about the electrical company. I've been receiving a lot of comments from the public as far as only having one company to choose from in various and different sectors of the, uh, economy here in Monument. And again, I would like to encourage opening up at least three companies for us to choose from and have agreements with in the future. And the third thing I would like to ask is that we also put an item on the, the, um, for board authorization to discuss affordable housing in Monument. This is also something that is very near and dear to my heart that, uh, I try to address before my term is up, actually. So, um, affordable housing is important, I think, for, uh, Monument to incorporate eventually, and I can't see a better time than right now. So I'm wondering if we can put these three things on the, uh, board authorization items to discuss in an, in a, uh, a quicker format than what's been happening, maybe next meeting or the meeting thereafter. Thank you for your time.
Okay, I would like to go ahead and clarify one of those items because it does seem there's a lot of confusion about it. The resolution in regards to the franchise fee is a fee we charge businesses for doing business in Monument. It does not have anything to do with us picking whether that business does business in Monument. It is just saying, you know, they, you, they, they basically have equipment in our ditches or in our easements, and they pay us a fee for having that. We don't choose our electrical providers for Monument, it is an open market. And if there was somebody that was wanting to compete with Mon- uh, Mountain View Electrical, they'd be happy to do that, but we have these agreements with, um, al- almost all providers as far as I know, and that would be include like Century Leaker Comcast, we don't pick one of those. We just have a franchise fee for the, the fact that they do business in Monument. So I hope that clears it up, if, if there's further confusion on that, please contact the Town Manager or, or even myself, and I can direct you to, uh, more information on that. Renewable water. I guess, I know one thing that we've often struggled with that, um, surprises me about some of the other districts around here is it's one thing to purchase renewable water, it's another thing to actually be able to use it. And one thing that we have not done is charge our rate payers for renewable water that we can't get to like some other districts have done.
Exactly.
So, do you want to expand on that?
Yes, sir, you're correct, uh, me and Tom are working with both of, both of the districts in the area with Woodmore and with Triview to, um, accomplish exactly what you're talking about. There's, there's water that they've purchased that they can't, uh, get to today, and they'd like to bring that through either CSU or another, uh, pipeline, uh, back to the Monument area. Uh, we are currently in discussions with both of those parties, they have different ideas about how to bring that uh, to the Monument area, to this region. Uh, we are working with both of them to, and with CSU, to accomplish those goals that we've talked about now for two years that I've been here, and I think y'all have been talking about for a long time, to bring some kind of renewable water, water other than well water to the town of Monument. And so we're working on that daily, we just met with, uh, Jesse over at Woodmore, we met with Jim with, uh, Triview last week. I apologize if we haven't updated you since then, but we, um, meet with them constantly, they meet with CSU, Tom's meeting with CSU, uh, I've met with them, and so we're right in the middle of this. They're doing a study on the Lower Chilcot Valley, um, a reservoir down there, they're doing a study on that right now to see what the cost of bringing, uh, the water from that area up to the Monument region is going to cost, either going through one pipeline or going through CSU. And so this is an ongoing project, uh, that is tied into the, um, sewer project that is going on with the Air Force Academy. And so we are constantly working on this, and we'll be glad to update the board on where we're at with this at any time that you wish us to.
I, I get the feeling that the reason we haven't been updated is we're not far enough to be able to make any decisions on that.
You're exactly right.
And I do agree, this is something that's been going on for a long time. It, it seems to just be a, a constantly changing atmosphere and no solid plans have been made.
Yeah, there's, there's competing efforts right now, if, if I put that right, there's, there's two organizations that are probably have two different ideas on how to get this accomplished. Uh, we're working with both of those organizations, we haven't said yes to either one of them, but right now we're comparing pricing. So we're going to compare what it takes to bring water up one pipeline versus what it takes to bring water through CSU. And when we get those numbers in, we're going to bring that to the board, and it'll be the board's decision on which pathway we go.
One thing in the past that we, we worked on or it became a. A big possibility in the past and then I think it died due to price was some sort of reuse facility. Do we have anything going on? That, I mean, has that completely died or is that something we're still looking at?
No, that's definitely something we're still looking at. One of the organizations that we're talking to right now still has that in their back pocket. And if we decide to go that route, when we give you a price comparison on what all these uh, options are going to cost you, that is going to be one of the options potentially.
Okay. Um. Any other questions or comments on that? And then trustee Clark, you had one other item which was affordable housing. Um. You just wanted it to be a board discussion item or were you looking for? Uh, a particular presenter on this or?
No, I just wanted to be a board discussion item. I'd like to get a feel for how the board. Is looking at portable housing in Monument so I can see where we're at and possibly offer um. Direction as far as that's concerned.
Okay, Ms. Hogan, will you make note to add that to one of our um, agenda, one of our upcoming agendas?
A particular agenda in mind?
Do you have a preference on uh, date trustee Clark?
Something in the next couple of weeks if, or the next couple of meetings if it's uh, available on the schedule.
Okay, uh, Mr. Foreman, will you ma- weigh the uh. The amount on the next two agendas and put it on whichever one we have more time for?
Yes, sir, I will.
Any other Board of Trustee comments?
Yes, I have comment. I would like to talk a little bit, uh, take a moment and just discuss some of my concerns about the kratom issue. Um, I think first of all, uh, we've heard a number of testimonies of people. Uh, and every time we uh, the kratom issue comes up, we hear testimonies of people that have, where, that have been helped significantly by kratom. And we're not in any way denying that. And it's kind of baffling to me why uh, the, first of all, the understanding in our law does not ban the use. Nor does it ban the possession of kratom. So if kratom is something that is helping an individual, we are in no way trying to stop that. What we're trying to do is stop the marketing of kratom in this town. And the selling and the, how shall I say, the normalization that, oh yeah, anybody can use this. Because there are a number of concerns that I do have. Um, Mr. Haddal said that it was grown primarily in Southeast Asia. Well, when I did a web search on kratom, first thing I found was exactly his uh, comment. And it said that Malaysia, Thailand, Myanmar, Singapore, and Vietnam, most of the Southeast Asian countries have banned kratom. So already to me, that raises a red flag. The next thing is I went to the Mayo, I happened to stumble across the Mayo Clinic uh, website and uh, basically here's their comments. And just, I know he said he uh, that Mayo has it in for the kratom association. So, but I didn't know that you're, you know, what your position was on Mayo at the time. Uh, so I pulled it and just for offering the other side of the coin, it says. Users swear by kratom for mood enhancement, fatigue reduction by, but safety issues and questions about its effectiveness abound. If you read uh, health news or visit vitamin stores, you may have heard about kratom, a supplement. That is sold as an energy booster, mood enhancer, pain reliever, and anecdotal uh, and, no anecdote for opioid withdrawal. However, the truth about kratom is more complicated and the safety problems related to its use are concerning. Anyway, won't read the whole thing. It goes on. Uh, then I pulled another one on, on NBC News and this was primarily talking about the FDA. And the Food and Drug Administration declares the popular herbal kratom to be an opioid on Tuesday. Uh, opening a new front on, oh, by the way, this is February 2018. Opening a new front on its battle to get people to stop using it. Supporters of kratom have been using it to keep it legal for years. The drug enforcement temporarily listed kratom as a Schedule I. Controlled substance last August, but withdrew the decision after an outcry and a targeted petition effort. Uh, the FDA has scientific ev- uh, evaluation shows there is no wiggle room. As the scientific data adverse event reports have clearly revealed the compound in kratom make it so that is not just a plant, it is an opioid. Uh, sellers market as a safe plant-based product, but the FDA points out that the heroin comes from plants as well. So anyway, uh, so now I'm forced or, you know, we're forced in a position, who do we believe? Is it the FDA or is it the doctors and, and the various people that Haddal uh, has, has brought forth? I'm, I prefer until we know for sure to err on the side of caution. Uh, so my concern is that we do restrict, we continue to maintain. Uh, our position and I would encourage the board and I ask for their support that we continue to maintain. That the selling of kratom is not yet until we understand more about it and research has, has been included. And another, uh, some other documents I've read are referred to opioid, I mean, to the. Issue of is it an opioid? Is it not an opioid? I've heard other articles call it opioid-like. So I'm concerned that we're splitting hairs in the sense of. Uh, you know, is it Tylenol or is it aspirin? But are they in the same class of pain reliever or painkiller? And so uh, my concern is, is that we are, you know, kind of splitting hairs on this. Uh, so if it, if there is any concern, which obviously the FDA has raised and, and other websites have raised. If there are concerns, I think we should err on the side of caution. We don't want to normalize something that we don't know, like I brought up the issue earlier about the cigarette industry. They said, yeah, uh, uh, smoking is actually good for you. In the 50s, the doctors actually said that. And I don't want to be in a situation where, you know, we having to put labels on kratom that says. Caution, this uh, could be harmful to your health. And then have to deal with people that are going through withdrawals from uh, from trying to real, you know, get off of cigarettes. Uh, so I don't know if that's the case in kratom situation. But again, I think the, 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 the panel is out on that. I think there's not enough research on that. And uh, because we are a family town, I don't want to normalize uh, the use of kratom. I want to continue to uh, restrict, um, how shall I say? Uh, I think we've had, we have a lot more younger kids, uh, and I know the gentleman has said he's concerned. He has no issue with banning it with 18, but the biggest users of marijuana are in their twenties here in the state of Colorado. And uh, we have banned the sale of marijuana in this, there are no um, uh, what shall I say there? We don't allow any stores to sell marijuana in the state, in the city of Monument. And I think we need to continue that same policy for kratom. So. Anyway, I don't want to take up too much time, but that's my position on that and I, I would hope that the board would be able to support me in that.
I do support you that, I do support you and trustee Stevens. Thank you for your uh, sharing of that information. I will take that to heart.
Thank you. Any other board comments?
Uh, trustee Stevens, I want to mention that um, as I mentioned previously. I would love to see the evidence of safety um, in regards to uh, the people that uh, need kratom, take kratom. And this is certainly not um, against, you know, I'm glad it's available elsewhere, Colorado Springs, Castle Rock and elsewhere. Uh, but uh, definitely before our board votes to allow the sale of kratom in Monument. I really would like to see a little bit more evidence so that we can have a little bit more confidence if we were to um, change our, the board stance on kratom.
Okay, thank you. Uh, additional comments?
I've got a comment. So I wasn't here for the resolution that was passed to ban the sale of kratom. I wasn't yet elected to the board. Um, I'm sure the information that was found and this, the information I looked at is very compelling in both for and against. Um, I look at kratom as a product that you would find in the sections of pharmacies that are under non-pharmaceutical. Um, products that many don't have FDA approval, St. John's Wort being one of them. So I would have to say that right now, until the government, the federal government steps in to ban. The product, I would actually have no issue with it being sold within the town of Monument. If it's helping people. Um, nobody on the board that I know of is a licensed physician. We all have just opinions and can hear from professionals both for and against um, this particular product. Um, and, and how it can either hurt or, or help people. But if we ban one item, are we going to retroactively ban other items that have been on the shelves? For many years that also help people with their various medical conditions. So I'm of the opinion that until the federal government has decided to classify this as either a opioid or dangerous drug or whatnot. That we should not be limiting ourselves or our residents from taking, buying something locally so that they can consume it. With or without their own doctors prescribing that they do so.
If I may, one thing, just to give you the history of how that all started is a number of years before the kratom legislation came in. Uh, someone wanted, or there was a group that wanted to bring a methadone clinic here. And the town just went berserk over that. This room was filled and it was packed full. Uh, and they were absolutely not at all interested in a methadone clinic. Um, so, uh, and I think the mayor that, at that time, who thought it was not such a bad idea. Uh, he was gone in the next election. So clearly the, the, uh, I, I also, my opinion is that the um. As, as the, as this is being classified opioid-like. Uh, then my concern is that the town, uh, I feel like uh, many members of the town would also uh, be very um. Would support our current position and would not be at all thrilled to see kratom stores pop up in Monument. So just wanted to give you that background.
Okay, additional board comments? Okay, I have two more uh, board comments. Hmm. Mr. Foreman, is your emergency authority is still in effect, correct?
Yes, it is.
And. I would like to ask the board if they feel this is still necessary. I think Mr. Foreman's done a great job. Um, and, and keeping us in the loop on his emergency authority. But I don't think um, I don't think it's really necessary at this point anymore.
It's really not.
Your feedback on that?
Yeah, we talked about this the other day and, and really I haven't had to use it that much uh, during COVID-19. Uh, I think I've still kept the same pattern that I normally do, you know, inform the board before I make any rational or irrational. Decisions that we have to make here. Um, so you know, there really hasn't been an opportunity for me not to inform the board before we go and. Do anything that's got to be an emergency ne- necessary for, for us to have this ordinance in effect or this resolution in effect. So I think, you know, taking that away wouldn't hurt anything. I'm still gonna, if something comes up, we're gonna come to you. Um, and, you know, contact you and take whatever action you feel is necessary at that time.
Okay, does the board feel that um, it is appropriate to go ahead and, or in the uh, town managers earning? Uh, emergency authority in regards to COVID?
Yes.
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 Okay, um, we will end that emergency authority. Please let us know, Mr. Foreman, if anything else comes up that you think may be an issue uh, with that particular ordinance. Was it Nord Resolution? That particular resolution.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
So what you are try, what you're attempting to do is um. Remove the declaration of a local disaster under resolution 07 2020, the one that you passed um. Back, let's see, March 23rd of 2020. That particular resolution says that the disaster declaration shall remain in effect until the mayor of the town declares that that emergency has passed. And such declaration must be affirmed within seven days by the board at a special meeting or regular meeting. That's the language included in that resolution.
I was under the impression that we had a separate ordinance for emergency authority that we were still under. Is that in that?
Oh, well, there was a resolution that you guys passed that was specific to outdoor dining. And it gave me the authority to approve those liquor license expansions and um, public, or. The town manager could say that they could use streets and sidewalks for expanding their retail space. But this is the only other resolution that relates to the emergency um, declaration.
Okay, then before we, before we dismiss the emergency declaration. I would like the town manager and town attorney to look into uh, maybe get with Rosa. On any financial requirements that we need as far as COVID relief for. Do we have to maintain an emergency declaration to qualify for the, the, any financial relief?
Okay.
Before we end that, if that's okay with the board?
We can also simply draft a resolution to amend your initial emergency ordinance as well. So however you decide you'd like to move forward.
I think we'll leave it to you guys' judgment and research on what needs to come back to.
We'll come back to the next.
Move in the right direction and not stay stagnant.
Definitely.
Is the board in agreements with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I have one more thing before we uh. Before we end our meeting tonight. Um. I just got word that. Woodland Park has lost their mayor. Uh, for those of you that know anybody in Woodland Park, this is their. Second mayor that has passed away since July. Uh. Mayor Val Carr passed away today. Um, I know myself, uh, we spent not, not more than six months ago, we spent nine months together in a, in a class. And our hearts and prayers go out to Woodland Park and uh, Mayor Carr's family. Uh, just wanted to share that before we close. If there is a. There's nothing else from the board, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
We are adjourned.